Line of business is the election of a chairperson. So I'd like to open the nominations for chair.
Like to nominate John Phillips?
Second.
Are there any further nominations for chair? Uh, the nominations are closed for chair. Call for vote, all those in favor of.
Yeah. I think I'll move over there, I think I'll hear better. That's just going to be an issue.
Oh, good evening. Be a momentary delay. Call the regular monthly meeting. Yeltsa City Council. To order. All councils present with the exception of Mr. Hamilton. Who's apparently vacationing someplace more pleasant than here this evening. We're going to follow. The rules adopted by the state for remote meetings. All those with any comments tonight, please email Counselor Miller as he'll be attending them. And that's R. Miller at yeltswarthmain.gov. And again, it's R. Miller at yeltswarthmain.gov. Prior to, uh, for the meeting comments. And remember that if you have something to say on any particular item, it may be if you have a thought process to send it prior to the item on the agenda, as there sometimes is a delay. We'll allow proper time to see if that does come through. Item two. Pledge of allegiance, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united on, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
We follow Roberts' Rules of Order, of course, rules and procedures adopted at the annual organizational meeting. Item four, adoption of the Yeltsa City Council minutes from the March 15, 2021, regular meeting.
Move the table.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Ananamous, unanimous table. Item five, city manager's report.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just very briefly, just wanted to make sure that you're aware, we have a couple of folks out in the hallway who do want to be heard, uh, for agenda item 16. So we'll just have to be, make sure that we get those folks in at that time, so they can be heard. As far as my report goes, sir, the only thing I wanted to bring forward tonight is just to, just for clarification purposes, we have had some organizations that have reached out to the city regarding reservations for either Harbor Park or also Norton Park for events. And we have been holding off on permitting any such reservations in, uh, in light of the current COVID situation in hopes that the, uh, the governor would, uh, would reduce the, uh, requirements and restrictions. As of May 24th, outdoor gatherings are scheduled to go to 100% occupancy, at which time, barring any changes in her current policy, that we will begin accepting reservations for those locations for outdoor activities, under the caveat that any enforcement of mask mandating or any other requirements by the state for those events, that the individual organizations, uh, do that enforcement. It won't be, uh, the responsibility of the, of the, responsibility of the city to make sure that those guidelines are followed. So, just wanted to make that clarification, and that is all I had for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Item six, committee reports, this is a point of the meeting where anyone that of the council has attended in various meetings during the month, that they can bring back any news or information that they gathered at those. Do we, anyone wishing to report for meetings over the month? Quietly, everyone shakes their head. Item eight, presentation of awards. I see none. Item nine, public hearing in action on amendments to the City of Yeltsa Court of Ordinances, Chapter 14, Licenses and Permits Ordinance.
Mr. Chairman.
We skipped the citizens' comment.
You wanted that removed, correct?
Yes. At the request of CEO Tilton, uh, I moved to, um, strike number nine from the, uh, agenda. At his request.
You want to remove it permanently from the agenda?
Yes. If, if you want, I, people have to give an explanation why. When we reviewed this in December of last year, some very good concerns were brought up about the effect it might have on Girl Scouts and things of that nature. I think the way the economy is going right now and the restrictions being lowered, I think, I don't think we're going to have that many vendors coming here to sell their lobster, I think they'll be, you know, be selling it as they always have. If it becomes a problem, staff will be more unhappy to step in and correct, you know, address that ordinance. But right now, I don't really see any, you know, reason to do it. So by removing it from the agenda, Heidi doesn't have to keep putting it on every month, so.
So you're good with this?
I'm good with that.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor removing that item? Unanimous. Item 10, Council Order 122005, Discussion and Action on EMS Services Within the City of Yeltsa. It's tabled at the December 21st, 2020, January 11, 2021, February 8, 2021, March 15, 2021, regular council meetings.
One second, sir.
Chair, I think you forgot the citizens' comments, or maybe someone addressing comments other than the agenda items?
On the which one?
Uh, it's citizen comments, number seven.
Yep.
In case there's, I think you skipped over it by accident.
If anyone had come in? Oh. Yes, I did. I scratched that. I scratched that right after, my, uh, my thing. I apologize, yes. I'm rusty, I'm sorry.
I have a citizens' comment.
Yeah. So, we'll bounce back to the item I missed, citizen comments. It should have been read after committee reports, I apologize for my mistake. This portion of the meeting allows anyone to speak on an item that's not contained on the agenda and further, that it may have a couple of minutes to bring some item to their attention, they feel it is important to us to know. Anyone in the audience have anything that they'd like to bring? If not, Mr. Miller, do you have something?
I do. This is hello, over the past six years, and for the first month of this year, I have given you many reports of serious problems with public venue within a few feet of my home. Everyone knew this was wrong from the beginning, but for some reason approved it anyway. Yesterday around 12 noon, a group of 10 people were playing very loudly on the hoop outside my window. Thankfully, I just finished my Zoom meeting. As time went by, this group grew to about 20 people on the court. You can imagine the disturbance this caused, so I kindly asked them to please use the hoop on the other end of the court. They refused, saying the fence is too low and their ball goes over the, into Forest Avenue. As the situation became worse, I kindly gave them another reminder that the sign on the fence says, "Be respectful of the neighborhood." Again, they refused. I had no choice but to call the police department, have them quiet down and stop cursing. An officer did drive by twice, but never took care of the problem. I spoke to an officer merchant, and he said the officer didn't do, uh, the officer said they didn't see anything wrong. Question, who enforces the rules of the usage of the basketball courts, i.e. appropriate language is appreciated and be respectful of the neighborhood? There's a, she also enclosed a picture of the photo of, with the, a sign, what the, that's what it says on the sign. The Yeltsa CDC sign states that groups keep small, 10 to 20 people. I don't think 20 is small for one court. No one sanitized their hands, and they were definitely contacting one another. Please see a photo of the sign again. So far, many times I have had to let people know that there were courts after closing time. I usually give them 10 to 20 minutes after closing sunset time before letting them know. The Yeltsa City Council approved building of these courts. It is time to have them permanently closed with signs that, to use other courts off the Pond Avenue, or simply close all basketball venues. Tony Buzzard. That's it.
Thank you for reading that. It was received by email, I think all of the council got it. Any other comments?
No.
Nothing came in?
Nothing came in.
All right, so. Close of citizen comments for the night, presentation awards. Number nine, now back where we should be, council, number 10, Council Order 122005, Discussion and Action on EMS Services Within the City of Yeltsa, tabled at several meetings over the past. Do we have anything tonight?
So, uh, in, after reviewing the response from Northern Light, I'll read a portion of this, of this response, and it'll tell you exactly where they stand. We appreciate your input and have reviewed the comments by your attorney. However, this agreement matches all the other agreements we have in place with Hank, within Hancock County communities, and we prefer to keep standard approach, as we have the past three years. We plan to staff two ambulances with advanced EMT level or above in Yeltsa, which will be available to respond unless on, on calls elsewhere. So essentially, what that means is they have, uh, so where we went with this is we sent the agreement on to our attorneys. Our attorneys had some requests, and it went to the legal with Northern Light, and essentially, they've sent it back saying that the service agreement that they submitted is the service agreement that they would like to move forward. So.
So they want, have no desire to modify any agreement. What we've got is what we've got, other than negotiated terms of reimbursement, correct?
Correct.
So do we have enough information to act on this tonight, or not?
I don't know that we do necessarily, because I doubt anyone recalls what the, uh, what the exact wording was of that,
No.
of that contract. And I don't know if, if the council would prefer to, uh, go back to EMS committee first, before bringing it back to the council, or just bring that service agreement to the council in May for a final decision and vote.
I guess at, at this point. It's been nobody else that's, that's, uh, offered any, we found Northern Avenue, to the best of my knowledge, have we? Now, we've had some others, some people looking, and I think any of the other ambulance services have reviewed it and decided that it isn't profitable, and there's no other, for lack of words, we don't have any other choice that I know of, do we?
We have not, I, we have explored, uh, some other options, and they just didn't, just didn't materialize, both not cost, uh, cost effective.
All right. We don't have the details to, to discuss or bring to public meeting, so I would assume then we're going to end up trying to table this again and discuss it at another meeting with the further information next month, perhaps?
Yeah, I thi, I think absolutely next month, we can, we can, I can bring that original service agreement forward. And all the council will have opportunity to review that, and we can discuss it at the meeting and then have a vote.
Yeah, we can discuss it amongst ourselves, whether we like it or not, and then make a decision on it. Shell?
I think it might be beneficial to just have one more committee meeting before we, before the next meeting.
Yeah, I think so, yeah. It's just.
Should also note that Northern Lights has provided us with their written, um, notification that they will be vacating the fire department as of July 31st.
I think that came in an email.
So.
Any other council comments on this?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Uh, one thing I noticed, they, uh, couched in, I'll call it polite language, they said they would have two units to respond. What they don't say, and what is happening, that is two units for all of Hancock County.
Mm-hmm.
If they have a unit out in Goolsborough, and another unit out in, Lord knows where, 20 miles from Yeltsa, as the phrase goes. We're out of luck. There's an ambulance call here in Yeltsa. And I don't think that that's what the people of Yeltsa want.
The council, there's, there's also another unit that is in, located in Holden that can respond to us also.
They, yeah, that they would station in, uh, up to Lucerne.
Lucerne, yeah.
But they, they, even, then they say after that, if a unit is available.
Yeah.
Yes.
So.
It's not ideal.
It's, it's certainly is not ideal, and somebody's going to get burned.
And that's the point, we've, we've discussed this several times, and that's the same point you've raised several times. It's not an ideal situation, but you're at a point where we do need to offer the citizens of Yeltsa some protection.
Yeah, we do, but I just.
And when that, we've got nobody else to do it.
But I just want people to realize that that's what we're up against.
Yeah, that's exactly.
If we're not in agreeance with the way they want to do it, even the lawyer said is not, you know, then why would you agree to it? And then sign an agreement that's going to last for what, a year, two years, three years?
Yeah.
Maybe it needs to be a little bit less.
May not be perfect, but I don't think we've got enough information tonight, so.
They're going to come if you call them, no matter what, somebody's going to come.
We'll do, bring the agreement back, we can discuss it, and we'll act on it, and we can discuss these things, and then take an action at this next meeting. Have a motion to table, please.
Move the table.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Mr. Lyons opposed.
Oh, no, I'm tabling, yeah.
You're in favor of tabling it?
Sorry.
So unanimous.
My screen went blank. I'm a day late in a dollar short.
So that was a delayed response, I'll have to take that into consideration, thank you, Jim. Consent agenda, all items that are consented to be routine will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member saw a request, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered as normal sequence on the agenda. Item 11, Council Order 042100, Request to the Recreation Commission to Accept the Reservation of the following members, Denton Byrd and Lilian Frank, terms to expire on June 30, 2021. Amy Phillips, term to expire on June 30, 2022. Item 12, Council Order 024101, Request to the City Clerk for Appointment of Wardens and Ward Crocs for the four voting districts within the City of Yeltsa for June 8, 2021. City of Yeltsa School Budget Validation Special Municipal Referendum Election. Item 13, Council Order 042102, Request to the City Clerk for Approval of Setting the Polling Places Opening Time at eight, as 8:00 AM for the June 8, 2021, City of Yeltsa School Budget Validation Special Municipal Referendum Election. Those are the three items, does anyone on this council list, remove any from that consent agenda? Seeing no hands, I would appreciate a motion.
Mr. Chair, move to approve.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor? Unanimous. Item 14, Public Hearing and Action on the Issue of Business Licenses. We have one, two, three, four items before us, all four are okay, no problems with anybody. We'll start with Finn's Irish Pub Incorporated, doing business as Finn's Irish Pub, 156 Main Street, for renewal of a class, City Class B license, amusement, virtual liquor, and renewal of a state restaurant class, 1, 2, 3, 4 malt, spiritus, venus liquor license. Any comments from council or questions? Seeing none, public hearing is open, any public comment for, on the request of Finn's for renewal? Seeing no hands here, anything popping up on the magic screen, Mr. Miller?
I don't see anything, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, public hearing is closed. Motion, please, or action?
Move approval of Finn's Irish Pub.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor? Unanimous. Second item, Yeltsa Number One LLC, Doing Business as Hampton in Yeltsa, 6 Down East Highway, for renewal of a city lodging license. Any question from any councils on this? Seeing none, public hearing is now open, any comments from the public on that request? Nothing flowing in?
I don't see anything.
Public hearing is closed.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous. Number three, Yeltsa RI LLC, Doing Business as Yeltsa Ramada, 215 High Street, for renewal of a city lodging license. Council questions? Seeing none, public hearing open, public input on the request of the Ramada in for renewal? And again?
I don't see anything, Mr. Chair.
Media's slow, nothing's happening?
Nothing.
Then we'll close the public hearing.
Move to approve.
Yeltsa RI.
Second.
All those in favor? Done. Last item, Crestwell Investments LLC, Doing Business as the Airline Brewing Company, 173 Main Street, for renewal of a City Class B license, virtual liquor and amusement, renewal of a state restaurant class three, and four malt and vinous liquor license. Council question? Seeing none, public hearing is open, any comments from somebody in the room? Somebody on the internet?
Somebody.
Telepathically, we're good? Public hearing is closed.
Move to approve. Airline Brewing Company.
Second.
Third.
Moved in second.
All those in favor? Yes, sir. We're done. All approved. Item 15, Public Hearing and Action on Amendments to the City of Yeltsa Court of Ordinances, Chapter 60, Property Maintenance Item. Mr. Tilton?
Yes, sir. So, what we've done. In August 19, 2013, Yeltsa was, that was a hybrid of what the, the National Building Code had for a property maintenance ordinance. And the reason is, we were having trouble with tenants, issues going on where they weren't being allowed access to their apartments, they couldn't lock their rooms, uh, there was no lights in the hallways, things of that, but also the, to look at abandoned and dangerous homes. So, that's all addressed in this ordinance, but what I wanted to make an amendment to, I wanted to add language under Title 17, which is dangerous buildings. I want people to realize, it's just not the city making this up, this is a state law. And this way, we can address it and work with people. See, we've taken one home, well, we went to court, and we, typically, we always win the case, whether we get the city's money back, you know, it's a different issue, but. We were given the rights to go on a piece of property on Twin Hill a few years ago, clean it up, take out an abandoned mobile home, and they were taxed, a special tax, which they were unable to pay. The town received that property through a tax lien, and then we sold it and got our money back. We, the city right now owns, or where, hopefully, will be owning, two homes that are, that are neither being demoed or sold. And Councilman Blanchett made a comment, at that time, when we were talking about this, would be a good way to start seed money, to help start taking these homes down instead of using tax dollars. So if this amendment is passed, that would be my recommendation, to set up a fund for this, for what we get from these two sales, which would be the property on McGowan Hill, and the old Wallace property in back of Stanway's, uh, we'll just say called Shop, yeah.
Thank you. Questions from council from Mr. Tilton? Yes, ma'am.
So I have several questions and several concerns about this. Section 105.3, the right of entry. It says that you have the right at any time to, uh, request entry, and if entry is not provided to the structure of premises, that the code enforcement officer have, have, shall have recourse and remedies provided by law to secure entry. But this goes against the rights of privacy, the right, you know, unreasonable search and seizure, all that stuff. The other thing is that a lot of these are subjective in the entire code. Unsanitary, unsightly, I mean, that's subjective.
That's correct.
And so, if you're talking about a building that is, quote, "an attractive nuisance," it references that frequently. A, a, a swing set in somebody's backyard could be an attractive nuisance.
Oh, this, this, but this.
And if a person has posted, you know, trespassing, then what right does the city have to say that an abandoned building is an attractive nuisance when it might be a military person out on duty overseas? And it doesn't say that the abandoned building has to be dilapidated, it just has to be abandoned. There's too many risks to the, to the taxpayer, and this, you know, whether or not something is having, you know, it's to, considered obsolete. What kind of building's obsolete? It specifically stays. Obsolescence. And with the way green committees are going, I mean, if your house has all carbon-based heating, and you go all green, that could be considered obsolete. So I, I just think that there needs to be more clarity on what specifically allows the city to take over a property away from a homeowner. Additionally, the violation fine could be up to $2,500 a day. If somebody can't afford to fix their property, do we honestly think they can afford $2,500 a day?
That's state statute, that's got nothing to do with the City of Yeltsa, ma'am.
Yep. That's crazy.
That may be.
So who determines if the property, like, you go up and look, and I don't know, what do you call them? Is it eyesore, is what you're saying? Or is this property that's, they haven't been paying taxes, and there anything else on, or?
No.
You're just going to drive by and say that house over there, you don't like that they've got an old junk vehicle in the yard, so? Is that what it's about, or?
No, no, this is about unsafe, or, code enforcement, where health, safety, welfare, that's what we're interested in. I've been doing this 40 years, one time, and I don't go on people's property without their permission. I did get a warrant to go into a house at one time, and that's when there was 70 cats in this house, and there was two inches of cat feces on the sideboard.
But how, how did you know it was there?
Complaints from people, complaints from neighbors.
That went into their house?
That were friends of theirs, or were trying to be caretakers to the woman who owned the house. But what my point is, I've been doing this a long time, I don't just go in, I don't take, I've had, I've had all kinds of pressure in the last 10 years to, to go out to some of these homes, and I resisted that, because at that time, I didn't think we had resources, and I didn't think they were in that bad a shape. And I don't mind sticking my neck out for people that are having a hard time.
But that's you, but if, once we put it into statute, that could be, whoever could be your replacement when, if you ever retire.
This, this ordinance has existed since 1913, 2013. It's, it's, all, the only amendment I'm making, or what I'm asking for, is to illustrate that it's based on a state statute.
Okay, excuse me. That item in here, you say is state statute, is that you copying the state statute and adding it to our ordinance?
Word for word, yes, sir.
Word for it, so, even if that's in here, that statute covers this one way, even?
Yes, that's correct.
So that statute covers the City of Yeltsa, whether it's in here or not, correct?
If we did not have this.
Or do we have to adopt it?
Right, if we did not have this ordinance at all, we could still use Title 17.
Yes.
I'm sorry, the, it's between the mask and the hearing.
I'm sorry.
So this statute does not cover us without it being adopted by us locally?
No, that's not true, it covers us right now, John.
All right, that's what I'm asking, so this, whether we adopt it or not, covers the City of Yeltsa?
That's correct.
It covers every city in the state?
But we want, I wanted to, because when people look at a city ordinance, they think it's the city that did it.
Okay.
I want people to understand this is based on a state statute.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Lyons.
Counselor Kaplan used the word risk. In, uh, in her summation. And I want to show her what some of the risks are. If you look up on the screen, this is a home on Burt Avenue here in Yeltsa. This is the foundation. Not only could a three, or four, or five-year-old get in there, I could get in there quite easily, to say the least. This house has been abandoned for about 12 years. There's a close-up of that same hole, if you look at the timber that supports that building, that's a dangerous building. The owner has done nothing to, uh, get rid of this problem. There are more animals that live in there, uh, than, than you would ever believe. Needless to say, some little kid can find that as an attractive nuisance. And that's what I'm trying to stop here in Yeltsa. And that's what I'm trying to stop here in Ellsworth. This outbuilding attached to it, it's wide open, there's frames of glass that have been leaning up against there for a long time, some of them are broken. This building has missing windows in it. In the back of the house, there's another hole in the foundation. Needless to say, there's a lot of rot in there. It also has open doors. We do not need buildings like this in Ellsworth, Maine. This does nothing to promote the city. This does nothing to attract people to neighborhoods. The house, one building up from this, they spent tens of thousands of dollars a couple of years ago rehabbing their property, and yet, they still have to look at this junk. This house should have been torn down at least a decade ago, and yet, it's still been allowed to stand. Do we really want people coming to Ellsworth and saying, "Look, the city doesn't do a damn thing about their buildings, they, these old derelict and abandoned buildings, they just let them stay there, making all of the neighbors having to live with it." Well, all of the neighbors are sick and tired of having to live with this. There are seven homes, at last count, like this in Ellsworth, that are in various stages of repair, worse than this. Some have collapsed. We own one of them. Mean, when I say "we," the city. This has gone on long enough, and we have to do something. We cannot let this continue any longer. The owner of this building doesn't care a whit about it. He knows it's way beyond repair financially. It, it's, it's a tear-down, and it's an attractive nuisance that needs to be gotten rid of.
Mr. Lyons?
Does the owner, I mean, what do they want to do with it? They don't want to do anything with it?
I guess, no.
So, what are you suggesting, that we tear it down, the owner's not going to, right?
I suggest that we pass this ordinance.
I don't understand this ordinance.
And, and then, if we tear it down, then I believe, Mr. Tilton, correct me if I'm wrong, then the owner gets billed for our cost, is that correct?
That's correct. Usually, we, we will put a lien on the property, and they'll have so much time to pay that lien off.
Yeah, if they can't afford to pay it, so you just take their property?
That's, yes.
That's what happens. So.
But you need to realize, this, this goes through a court process.
Okay.
You know, we're just not gonna say, vote and say, "Oh, we're gonna tear it down." You know, it's, it's a legal process, that's why it's important to have some seed money, so it's not a burden on the taxpayers.
That's, uh.
I don't, I don't understand, if it's already a state statute, why, what are we doing adding to it? I mean, it's gonna work no matter which way you do it, right?
I, I wanted to add the language, from the ordinance we adopted, the property maintenance ordinance, did not have any reference to state statutes or state laws. I want, when I approached the people, I wanted them to understand, this isn't something Ellsworth made up, this is a state statute.
So, if you went to the person that currently owns this, I'm assuming the taxes are paid up, and everything is that?
I don't know.
If you go to that person, you say, "Look, we want to tear this down and sell the lot to somebody," would they be okay with you doing that?
No.
No.
Oh, well.
Okay. So, let's go through this, Dwight, for a little clarification. So, if we decided we tear Mark's neighbor's house down, or, okay, I guess, I guess what I'm wanting to say is, how is that decided? Do you initiate this, or do you bring the proposal, the council votes to move along with it? What are the steps in the process?
We, we would reach out, as I've had with this individual before, we have to have the paper trail before we go to court. So, if he, if he refuses to go, the council holds a public meeting, you determine that the house isn't safe under health, safety, and welfare, or whatever the issue would be. Prior to that, we would have an engineer go and dictate it's not structurally sound, because that's nothing you want a staff person to do, because it's gonna be challenged if we don't have the credentials to say it's not structurally sound. If that all goes through, then once that's said and done, then we'll have our attorney present at the court. And like I say, typically, you will win those cases, but you're not, typically, are you, not gonna always get your money back.
Yeah. All right, so they go through the process, they don't do, so in the end, so we'll have, the City of Ellsworth will have, your code enforcement's time invested, and a substantial amount of money tied up with an attorney's fees, correct?
Possibly.
More than likely, it's not, everyone thinks this is a good idea when you come knocking on the door. And at that point, we pay to have it torn down.
Correct.
Correct? So, we've got labor fees, we've got disposal fees, then we present the owner that has no money to pay for it with a bill, they can't pay for it, we end up either seizing the property or, or putting a lien on it, and eventually ending up with the property.
That's correct.
So, at that point, we will have $20,000 to $40,000 tied up in removing the building, more than likely.
More than that.
More than that, probably.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Blanchett?
And also, at that point, now you've gotten rid of a dangerous building that no little kids can go playing in.
I, I hear your, I hear you, what you're saying. But I don't think, I don't think that the City of Ellsworth is unique in this situation. Anyone driving around down East Maine or through the state of Maine sees that in the larger cities than the smaller cities, and then, as it goes throughout the world. And the problem is, it becomes property rights, and it's the, the taste of the local governing people to, to decide whether they want to do it or not. Ms. Kaplan?
The concern I have, I mean, I can certainly understand, you know, your concern about glass being round and, and children, but the problem I have is in the wording, obsolescence, abandonment. How long do you have to not be in your property for it to be considered abandoned?
We, I never, well, again, most code officers don't look at the abandonment part. If the taxes are paid, and this house is being kept up, it's not an issue. But if they, someone walks away, and, and, as Councilman Blanchett said, the windows are all broken out, and you've got transient people living in these homes, which we've had in the issue, we've had that issue here in Ellsworth before, then it, then it becomes a concern.
But let's say you have a soldier deployed in Iraq, and he's gone for two years, and some vandals decide they're gonna break out his windows, but he's stuck in Iraq and can't do anything about it.
Yeah.
Does he lose his property?
Prob, well, if it's the taxes are being paid, probably not, because we also, under this, Chapter 60, we also had the right to go in, ask them to board up and secure the building, if they don't, we can go do that also, and then just give them a small bill for what it costs us, for, well, plywood's expensive now, so it wouldn't be a small bill, but, you know, so there's, there's other ways to do it. Taking, taking a person's property, that's an extreme case, it really is.
And what does obsolescence constitute? What is an obsolete building? Is there a definition on that?
I don't have the whole ordinance written, so I don't know, but I can find out for you.
The thing is, Michelle, we're sitting here debating that, that's state law, and whether, and that, at this point, all you're doing is, is raising good points of why did they pass that in the beginning. All we're discussing tonight is whether we agree to add this state law to our ordinance so that it's easy to find for those that Dwight or Freezer Code Enforcement may have to use. And then that triggers a process. This isn't something we march into somebody's house and take it away, whether he's in Iraq or, or whatever the circumstance, I haven't mitigated. All we're discussing here tonight is to take an existing law, whether we agree with it or not, add it to our ordinance to make it a little more clear for anyone that has approached with this, how we got to that point. So, that's my understanding, Dwight, correct?
That's correct.
So, this is what the debate is tonight, whether you disagree with it, if you disagree with it, fine, and I'm not arguing with you, there are some pretty vague tendencies in there. But that also, Michelle, will come before a council, and there's gonna be seven people deciding if it's obsolete, not just Dwight, or Laurie, or whoever happens to be in the code enforcement. So, there is some mitigation with that, and some safety in that, that's why it's written that way, whether you agree with how the state legislature built it.
All right, so if it's state law already, what are we adopting tonight, specifically?
Excuse me?
If it's state law already, we're just?
He's adding it to the, wants to add it to the ordinance to make it easy. If you know, if you were approached by that, you wouldn't know what the ordinance is that's doing it. So, this puts it in our ordinance, and I, I understand his process, that makes it more clear for some individual, their approach to this, to find the law. That's all. If we don't agree with it, then we don't have to vote on it. Ms. Lyons?
So, if we tear this down, fix up the property, and sell it at fair market value, say, and then whatever it costs to tear it down and fix it up, give the people that own the property the balance?
That's correct.
Pardon me?
That's typically correct, yes.
Yeah.
So, if it costs you 40, you tear it down, you sold the property for 80, they get 40,000, and that, would that fly with the people that own it?
I don't know.
I mean, a piece of property, well, well, we could put a trailer on it, move it in beside Mark's house.
Easy. I don't, if anyone's here.
No, but a piece of property in that area, I think would be worth a substantial amount of money.
Gene, don't, I don't want to see him going down the floor tonight. But that thought. But this is it, this is why we're here, we either agree with this or we don't, and you can, and the whole process is, that's why it's not done, because the process is long and difficult, and a tough decision to make. Tonight, we're simply discussing whether we think we ought to add this to it or not. If we don't agree with it, when we call it the vote, then you vote no, and it goes from there. Yeah, whether you agree with the law, but.
I might still not understand, 100%.
So, that's what we're here. Any other comments from counsel? All right, this is a public hearing, I'm gonna open the public hearing, see if there is any input. The public hearing is open for any input or, or comments on this addition to the ordinance. Yes, on this issue, if you're on. Please state your name when you're at the podium.
My name is David Burks, I'm here from Ellsworth, actually live a, a few houses down from the one that Councilman Blanchett showed us tonight. And I found out, I think, why it's called Fox Street, because I think there's a family of foxes living underneath that home, or that building, I should say, because it's not really a home right now. But anyway, so I, I rise in to support the proposal to strengthen the ordinance, giving it some teeth, and right now, it doesn't seem like it has enough teeth to do anything with it. We have a lot of beautiful homes in the town, mostly are, are maintained really well, and it's, these, this one, and there's one around the corner, too, that are virtually abandoned, either because there's no resources anymore, or time to rehab that building, and the other one is, is, has been up for sale for a while, but I don't think it's attractive enough to sell. And sadly, during the summertime, the yard is a jungle, and according to the ordinance, the grass and weeds has to be no taller than eight inches. So, that isn't being taken care of. And the, the issue of it being a, an attractant, that is definitely a place for kids to play in, I know I probably would have if I was a kid back then, but it really needs, we really need to do something about this. I, I was in that home about 10 years ago, so, visiting the gentleman who used to live there, beautiful home inside it was, and now it's just totally gone to history. So, I, I, I understand the property rights issue there, that's important, but the neighbors have rights, too, to live in a neighborhood that doesn't look like that. So, I encourage you to give some teeth to this ordinance and make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Burks.
I have nothing, Mr. Chairman.
You're receiving some? Nothing has come in?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I might add that Mr. Burks said there was a family of foxes living in there, that is true, what he didn't mention, they're also cohabitating with the families of skunks and families of raccoons.
You're discussing, it sounds more like a wildlife refuge.
Yeah.
Unfortunately.
Maybe, maybe that's what should be open there.
Yeah.
All those animals, what are gonna happen to them?
And it's next door to your house.
It's a public meeting, I won't say.
All right. Any other comments, anyone here, or you're receiving nothing, then close the public I guess, whether you agree or disagree with the ordinance or whatever it is that the state has created, this is Mr. Tilton's request to add it to our ordinance for clarification.
One more question.
Yes, sir.
We're not changing any ordinance, we're just adding it to our.
This is state law, according to Mr. Tilton, that he cut and pasted and added it in here. So, if this did proceed, it allows you or your neighbor, when that process starts, to see what they're doing, that it's nothing that we dreamed up specifically for, that we're using an existing ordinance, it's just an easier path, is my understanding, correct?
Nothing's changing from the state.
Nothing, and the whole ordinance has changed.
You're not adding to or taking away, it's just.
No, just, just cut and paste that section of Title 17.
Yeah. Clarification. We've had a pretty interesting discussion.
Move to approve.
That's all. Counsel action on this request.
Move to approve.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Kaplan opposed, motion passes. Thank you, and thank you for the input. Sixteen, Council Order 042103, discussion concerning different options for dealing with floating structures on lakes within the City of Ellsworth. Counselor Rendell, sponsored by you.
Thank you. I do want to remind folks, this is just a discussion, and no action will be taken. This issue was brought to my attention by a number of folks, that there are discussions taking place at the state level regarding floating structures on the state's lakes and ponds. I have particular interest in this, we already have a houseboat ordinance at the harbor here in Ellsworth. The city's really taken a lot of time and money to make our lakes and ponds accessible to all residents and to people who want to use them, so I think it's really important that we keep that in mind. You know, Ellsworth has a number of lakes and ponds in its jurisdiction, I don't know, I was looking it up, there's like six, six plus, so. And so, I wanted to provide an opportunity for residents to come forward and to discuss this issue further, because it may, there may be something happening at the state level. There's already a number of cities and towns in the state that have already adopted some sort, sort of an ordinance, so I'd like to open it up, open the discussion.
Mr. Lyons?
What are we trying to, you're trying to do away with people having, is this what it's about, they're trying to do away with people having like a, say a boat moored in, say, Green Lake, that's, or one of those big slide things with the jump-off of it?
I don't, there's a number of folks here this evening who are gonna talk about it, I just brought it forward, and I don't know exactly what's happening at the state level, that's what I'm interested in, in listening to hear what, what's going on.
Yep, well, at that point, then let's, let's have some input, Mr. Lyons, from some of those that are here representing it, and maybe we'll get a more clear picture of what's going on. So, anybody here would like to comment or make some discussion on that, please go to the podium, state your name, and.
My name is Audrey Tony, and I live at 35 Grant Street in Ellsworth. I have property on Green Lake, I am a member of the Hancock County Lakes Association, and I'm president of the Green Lake Association, and I speak for both of those organizations this evening. Hancock County Lakes Association is, is an alliance of the individual lake associations in the area to help one another, support one another, particularly in environmental protection of the lake. I just want to say that. I just want to say that the Green Lake Association has worked with the community at Green Lake for many, many years now. Our purpose is to advance and promote Green Lake as a valuable natural resource, and our focus is on environmental protection. And that includes wildlife protection, the loons, the eagles, the ducks, water quality protection, recreational safety, and limitation of noise and light pollution. Now, we do this through programs and publications, educational opportunities. We are there to help our property owners to become the best of possible stewards, to protect the lake, and in so doing, to protect their property values. Those shorefront values are an important part of Ellsworth's tax base. I'm sure that's not lost on you. Wildlife, water quality, safety, these are values that support shorefront property values. When they're put at risk, so are those property values. Owners of property around the lake have been and are about to be more substantially affected by individuals mooring out in front of their shorefront property without permission. These houseboats present a series of risks. Imagine for a moment that one of these floating structures is anchored in front of your shorefront property, and there's an invitation sent out to other boats to join. You have as much, or as many, rather, as three or four sea dews and a couple of powerboats latched on, you know, hooked on, tied on to the structure. That becomes a floating marina. And you can imagine what that does to the enjoyment and the peace and the effective use of those shorefront owners. IF&amp;W Commissioner Tim Peabody said in a recent testimony before the legislature on LD 626, which you'll hear a little bit more about tonight, that these houseboats present three risks to the state's great ponds. A, interference with wildlife. B, interference with navigation. C, the unauthorized discharge of gray water and black water, since some of these structures are not designed with toilet facilities. So these are the risks. And I would add noise as well. So I really would support the council and the city's staff to take, take a look at these concerns and see if there's a way that we could come out, mediate some solutions to these problems, as other cities have done. Now, I'd like to introduce Dale Jellison, who is a member of the Green Lake Association, also a property owner at Green Lake, and he's been involved in researching the issue and also participating in the public hearings for LD 626. So with your permission, I'll ask Dale to come forward.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dale?
My name is Dale Jellison, and as Audrey mentioned, I am a property owner on Green Lake. And on March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, the IF&amp;W Committee, State Committee that is chaired by Senator James Dill, introduced LD 626. And during that testimony, at, in that Zoom, Zoom meeting at which I testified, Tim Peabody, who is the Deputy Commissioner for the Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife, presented several different issues that, that he wanted the committee to hear. He went on to say, "We have been in communication with the bill sponsor, Representative Sterns, for background on the bill, as well as staff at DACF, which is the Department of Agriculture, Conservation, and Forestry, submerged lands program, trying to determine the best approach to addressing the concerns that are associated with this bill." Representative Sterns explained that the focus is related to floating camps, as he described a situation on Moosehead Lake, where a floating camp is rented out to the public. It is moored near a shoreline in front of a house. This is not a new issue. IFW and DACF have dealt with several scenarios similar to this on Rangelley, Subago, Long, and Angersgoggin Lakes, just to name a few. This is a cross-jurisdictional issue that impacts both DACF and IF&amp;W's authority, as well as municipal ordinance in some situations. Deputy Commissioner went on to say, "There are multiple points of discussion and issues to contemplate, such as these static floating homes or camps that are connected to moorings, displaced water surface on great ponds that are held in public trust for citizens to have free access to navigate. Fish and fowl, having no way to stop or minimize the number of these structures that are moored within the water safety zone, could and does, in some cases, greatly impact navigation for commercial and recreational boating activity." Second point, the submerged lands program housed within DACF has rules that prohibit non-water-dependent uses, such as floating houses or camps, but doesn't have a mechanism to enforce them. Point number three, having structures such as the ones described often creates issues of waste disposal, a lack of maintenance, and subsequent material settling at the bottom of the lake. Often, the owner doesn't have the means to take care of it, and the work to recover materials falls on a state agency or a municipality to clean it up. Both IFW and ACF agree this issue needs to be addressed, but we are fully supportive of the discussion. Due to the complexities mentioned, we would ask the committee to consider allowing the departments to work together and identify all the sections of, of law that may be affected by this issue, and perhaps propose a solution. The testimony of Tim Peabody was, was well received by the committee, and I believe that this is the time for action. Again, having attended the May fifteenth work, uh, hearing on LD 626, it was sent back to workshop and with an estimated timeframe statewide to not come out of committee until February of next year. Because more houseboats will be coming to Green Lake and other great ponds in Ellsworth, I am interested in working with Dedham, and I have spoken with the, the Selectman, uh, Administrative Assistant in Dedham about the issue, because, as you know, about one-third of Green Lake is in Dedham, and so it can be a common problem for both municipalities. And I agree that there should be work with the city council and city staff in the near future to explore the options to address houseboats on the great ponds in Ellsworth. With your permission, I would like to introduce Andy Hamilton, who would like to also speak on this issue.
Your turn.
So that was such enthusiasm from Council Chair Paulson.
I've listened to your eloquent voice for many times in the past.
So my name is Andrew Hamilton. I'm an attorney at Peabody in Bangor, but for some years now, with my wife Patty, who's here, we've owned property on Green Lake, and it is a wonderful place. We have fished there for many years before we were fortunate enough to find shorefront property, for which we pay taxes to the city of Ellsworth, and with pleasure. But if you've ever experienced a party in your front yard, and it happens for the entire summer, you might understand what motivates me to be here this evening, with colleagues who are supportive of protecting a little bit of what shorefront property owners need to have in order for it to be a fair bargain, to pay property taxes, and to have property values out the front window. So city councillors, city manager Mosier, CEO Dwight Tilton, Representative Sherm Hutchins, who I know is here tonight. To clarify, there is no proposed measure before you this evening. We had thought of any number of things we could bring before you, but you're about to hear some, from some folks who don't want any of their liberties taken away. And we're accustomed to hearing about liberties, but liberties in a public setting involves balancing. And any of you who don't believe in balance, you wouldn't have acted the way you just acted on the last ordinance if you didn't believe in balance. Property rights have to be in balance with the public good. So several communities have acted. They include the town of Rangelley, that had a really big issue with houseboats. They include the town of Wilton. They include the town of Harrison. And those three communities are strictly freshwater communities, no coastal waters. You've dealt with houseboats in the coastal context on the Union River, and you've decided that there's something about houseboats that you want to treat carefully in the context of the harbor. The town of Edgem has both coastal waters and fresh waters. They've addressed houseboats. The town of Sullivan, here in Hancock County, has addressed houseboats. They've addressed it clearly. But again, other towns are considering measures to guide the use of and mooring of houseboats. Rangelley provides a good example. In the town of Rangelley, the owner of a houseboat that seeks to moor their craft in front of private shorefront property must register the mooring. Simple fee, it's like twenty-five bucks, to register with the town. It pays for itself. I understand that the town of Rangelley collects more than what they've had to spend on enforcing the requirement that folks register their houseboats. In communities across Maine that are seeing B and Bs and vacation rentals, what's the first step they put on the, on the municipal books? Registration. It's a simple requirement. But again, we're not here with a measure this evening, because we're very respectful of those who have the right to navigate on the great ponds, and we want to hear what they have to say. We'll be watching this summer, and we'll be back, because I've been encouraged by my fellow shorefront owners, hang in there, Andy, there's something that's important to speak up for. And so, notwithstanding some voices that you'll hear this evening, I'm going to be back. And my act of courage on this one, even though I may see people bugging me this summer because I had the courage to speak up, I'm here because there's got to be balance in all things. When you have imbalance, you've got problems. And we've got a challenge on Green Lake. And not just on Green Lake, you're going to see it on other lakes. It's on Phillips Lake, and it's in other communities that have freshwater lakes, like Moosehead Lake. I serve as council for the town of Greenville. I've heard about this issue for ten years. And finally, it, it went to the legislature. We understand the city's staff has asked legal counsel for the city if the city has authority to regulate houseboats on a great pond. And consistent with what other municipalities across Maine have done, the city's attorneys determined the city does have authority to regulate on a great pond. Again, are we here with a measure tonight? No. We do not have an ordinance that we're proposing. We also understand that the city is supportive of legislative efforts to strengthen the state's oversight of houseboats on great ponds. We only ask at this time that the city council give us permission to work with city staff to bring options back to you to regulate houseboats on the great ponds in the city. We understand the staff would like the council's support to work on this in a way that first preserves the shorefront property values on the great ponds, second, does not impose heavy costs of enforcement on the city, but continues the city's tradition of working with the state, and third, that balances reasonable use of the great ponds by houseboats with all other users and shorefront owners on the great ponds. I've told any number of boaters in the cove, including those that use the beach, you all come in and use it occasionally. But when you have ten or fifteen of your friends with ten or fifteen boats that are going down that beach, it changes the nature of it. Could you please respectfully reduce the numbers that come in together? Same with the houseboats. If it's just one houseboat for a few weekends, not a problem. But if it's a houseboat for an entire summer with notice to friends, you all come in and party on this houseboat? That's a little bit different. So as Representative Fay from Poland said in her testimony, I always think the woman's testimony is the best testimony. She says the following, "When her grandfather built his camp on the lake, there was a gentleman's agreement that you only placed a mooring in front of your property in between an extension of your property lines out into the water." These days, those types of common understandings have largely disappeared with turnover in ownership. With the increased number of watercraft and all types of floats, and the lure of online rentals of overnight accommodations on the water, she said it's exactly the right time to come up with a plan that will help Maine avoid some of the inevitable conflicts and safety issues that will come with this type of change. So first, I would say to this city council, I offer my hand of respect and support for all of you that have that wonderful ability to spend your volunteer time for the big bucks working on the public's issues. I extend my hand of respect and support. To our colleagues that own houseboats, I extend my hand of support and respect. If we can sit down and work through some issues in terms of what balance means, I think it makes it easier on the city council and the city administration. And I'm willing to do that. What I'm not willing to do is have people be disrespectful and say, "I got a right to be here, I'm just parking my houseboat, inviting all my friends in, and we're just going to party." That I'm not respectful of. So I thank you for your time. I'd like the chance to respond at the end of the evening, so we can try to bring this together and make some forward progress. We're here, Mr. Chairman, with the hope that some progress can get started. We don't have unrealistic expectations that it'll get done in a day. Thank you.
But you're at the beginning of the discussion as well. This is our first time. Thank you, Andy. Anyone else in this room would like to make comment on this issue? Yes, sir.
I'm Representative Sherm Hutchins. I represent one-third of Green Lake, because I represent Dedham and Lucerne. And so I've had quite a few comments from the folks about this, this problem. And then, in discussing it with some of my friends in Augusta, especially Paul Sterns, who happens to be a seatmate of mine, or used to be a seatmate when we used to meet in the State House, I congratulate you on meeting here. That's a, a big help, being able to do that, rather than Zoom meetings that take four and five hours and don't work as well as this. So I'm glad to see you can do that. And what, what the committee has decided to do is to, just as Andy just told you, is to come back with recommendations after a, about a year's study of this. And I think that's going to be probably quite helpful, because they're going to get a lot of, of information, as, as we do on, on issues from time to time in, in the committees and the IF&amp;W and the committee I work on, Department of Marine Resources, work together quite often. In fact, we even had a joint meeting the other day on airboats, and listened for four hours to fifty different people talking about that issue. And, and when you do that, you get a lot of information. It's quite helpful. So, so I'm, I'm ready to help if I can, and all you have to do is call.
Thank you. I think you're going to find some more information here in a minute when the people in the hall will come to testify. Anyone else in this room? So how do we deal with this, Mr. Volsh? You're going to let them in one at a time? So, please state your name for the record.
My name's Terry Pinkham. I live here in Ellsworth. I have a residence at 586 Nicoleen Road and 444 Bangor Road. I was listening to your conversations out there in the hall. Unfortunately, there wasn't enough room for us all to get in here. There were several things brought up. One, about wildlife endangerment with a houseboat or a floating structure. Two, pollution, i.e. gray water, black water, or perhaps just debris coming off of the boat itself, and noise and light. I've lived in the state my whole life. I've lived right here in Ellsworth my whole life. I've enjoyed the waters of Maine. I'm a master Maine guide, hunting, fishing, recreationally, and I have my commercial boat operator's license. I do this on a regular basis. We are very, we're stewards of the environment, okay? Every person that comes with me also follows those guidelines. What we're talking about here is taking away from kids and other people being allowed to get on a houseboat, swim, enjoy themselves. Just to be clear, I do have a house float. It is not a boat. There's no motor on it. We enjoy it. Our families enjoy it. Our children enjoy it. We try to be respectful to everyone. I did bring a picture of it if you guys would like to look at it. It's not the eyesore it's being claimed to be. Also, we spend all winter long on the ice, ice fishing, and sometimes there'll be as many as 100 ice shacks out there, maybe more. Those are permanent shacks that stay there all winter, not to mention the people that come throughout the year to come out and fish and enjoy the lakes like we do. It's the same exact principle, it's just there's more of them, and it's not so hard to look at if you're not here that time of year, okay? So we use this as fun for our kids, everyone else. We want to be able to keep it, okay, and keep using it as we are respectfully, and as far as liberties being taken away, we don't want any of ours taken either. And in the state, we've been able to do what we want, when we want, as far as it comes to recreational fishing, hunting, playing with boats, things of that nature. There's some other people outside that would like to come in and say something too, but just as far as it goes, is this something that the city council even discusses, or is this a state issue?
This is, I think at this point governed by state laws primarily, and I think the request is for the city council to enact some standards or ordinances that may affect it, yes.
So supersede the state law?
This is the beginning of a process, Terry.
Yes, I understand that.
So nothing is done now. We're here to listen to testimony.
Right, but this is where we start with it.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry.
We're here to make a decision after that. You're allowed to get some testimony. We'll hear what you have to say.
Okay, thank you. Well, that's all I have to say right now. I have some other people that might like to come in and say things too, but I thank you for your time.
All right, thank you for coming in.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, excuse me.
I have a question, please. Mr. Pinkham, you said there's no motor on this structure?
No, there's no motor at all.
Is there a, are there bathroom facilities?
There is. There's a self-composting vanity inside, like a sailboat toilet, similar to what would be on any boat or any kind of boat with a cutty or those facilities. You know, on the boat we have, it's 24 feet long. We have anywhere from eight to 10 people on it at times, maybe more. People do raft up next to us, but that's common occurrence on the lake. We see it very often all over the lake. But we do have facilities to take care of waste in an emergency situation. There's also a public outhouse at the boat launch on the Nicoleen Road at Green Lake, which gets used quite often. You know, we have different people out there, girlfriends, kids, things like that, people maybe not feel comfortable to do that, so they go back over there and use the facilities, which is provided for us.
What is the capacity of this?
Well, there is no capacity on it on account of it's a float.
No, no, I'm sorry, of this compost?
Oh, the toilet, you know, I don't know the exact size of it. It's physically about two and a half or maybe two feet wide by probably three feet tall, and it's got sanitized bags inside of it, so the waste that goes in, then it gets closed up in a bag and taken, thrown away, just like any other boat, you know, it's been done for years like that. And as far as navigation goes, we keep it not in the center-third of the lake. We're always off the edge of the lake. We would go put it out in the middle except for, well, we don't want to get run over. We don't want people coming through, plus that's where everybody else out there that boats, I mean, I'm sure some of you guys boat in the summertime, you'll go out and you'll see 10 people on a pontoon boat. I mean, what is the difference? You know, what's the difference between that and then our boat, except we're not putting any gas or oil in the water, okay?
Can we see the picture?
Yeah. Do you guys like to hand it around, or? It's all Western red cedar, fully done, carpeted inside.
Is this your boat?
It belongs to me and a friend of mine who's outside.
Okay. Now, does a structure like this have to be registered?
It doesn't, but we checked with the state before we did that. We asked if we had to register. We don't have a problem registering it. That's not a problem at all. It's just, it's not something that's done. Unless you have a motor on it, you don't register it. But I mean, I'll tell you, that's prettier than any ice shack you saw. Go out there in January and look at some of those smelt shacks.
That'll give you.
I mean, we worked hard on that. We spent our money on it. We pay taxes here too. You know, we feel like we should be able to use the lake as other people do.
Basically a pontoon boat.
It's a pontoon boat without a motor.
Pontoon boat that you've added.
We actually built, we took pontoons and we built that structure on the top of it. And we get nothing but compliments when people come by. They see it, they're, "Oh, it's great." They think it's beautiful. They think it's awesome. They love it. The kids are jumping off it often. Can we come jump off in it?
Except for probably the person that you're in front of the house, which I don't.
Well, we're actually not in front of any house. We're in front of the beach, and there's houses to the left and houses to the right, but we may, I mean, we're not out there trying to be a bunch of you-know-whats. We're trying to be in the center.
Anyone else have any questions for Terry? There's probably more out there that would like to get, so.
We'll hear the rest of them.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Would you like to hang one of that pictures to the end, or?
Thank you, Terry.
Hello, my name is Jason Spiny. I'm resident at ADH Beechland Road here in Ellsworth. I am also half owner of the boat you guys just saw. I'm pretty sure that with the people that he was describing, we're literally 250 feet from his dock, way offset to the right in front of the beach. We're not anywhere near the front of his dock, and we've always been on the lake. We've spent our whole lives on that lake, enjoying it as far as fishing, swimming, ice fishing. We enjoy it year-round. Like he was explaining before, there's 100 ice shacks on that in the wintertime that are everywhere, directly in front of people's camps, docks, wherever. Those people are just not there to see in the winter, but they're all there. It's the same exact thing, it's just they're not floating structures, they're sitting on top of ice. The other thing I wanted to say is we've done the best we can to make it look good, to make it be as pleasant to look at as possible. We've always been very courteous to anybody that has a problem with it unless they're literally yelling at us from the beach telling us to move it from 250 feet away. Bogger language, whatever else. I understand that he's upset that we're there, but we did the best we could to stay away from his property, and we're literally in the center of two camps that are 600, 700, 800 feet apart down the beach line. So that's where we put it. We've done our best to be courteous. The other thing is it's no bigger than the average-sized pontoon boat. It's 24 feet long, it's eight feet wide. So anybody who moors a pontoon boat anywhere on Green Lake has the same exact real estate taken up as far as navigation for anybody else. The other thing is we have no mooring. We have no permanent mooring. The boat moves around the lake throughout the whole summer. We moved it six times last summer, and it has two anchors that we use that are easily pulled, and it's easily mobile. There's no moorings. We're not dropping concrete into the water to mooring it. It's a simple anchor. So basically, it's a float. We pull out with another boat, no motor, no registration, because we talked to the state and they said without a motor, no need for registration, and then we anchor it up and move it throughout the summer.
Out of curiosity, do you do overnight stays on it?
We have one time.
So generally, no?
Generally, no.
It's a daytime use?
Exactly. It's only an eight-by-12 cabin.
Any questions? Go ahead, ma'am.
You sent an email to, and you have the picture with it?
We did, yeah.
Do you have that?
Sure, you want it up?
You want to put that up? There's not really much to read here.
Yeah, it's the same picture that we passed around.
Then everybody can see, everybody else can see it.
So we built out a full Western red cedar siding, brand-new vinyl windows and doors, new pontoons. We've kept it as classy as possible. We're not building it out of scrap wood or throwing trash on the lake. We're avid fishermen. We care a lot about the environment. If anybody drops anything in the lake that came from us, we force them to get it. Right there, we're sitting in 10 feet of water, we can dive down and get anything that just happens to fall to the bottom, which we have done. We take our trash with us every single night. We take our disposal waste with us every night out of the toilet. But like Terry was saying, 90% of people don't use our toilet. They take a simple jog across the lake and use the landing public toilet, which is always there in the summer.
I wanted to add, is this the structure? There is no question.
Yep.
Yeah, I would just point out, sir, is that parked in front of private property?
Is it parked in front of private property?
Right, is it placed in front of a private property?
It's about 150 feet offshore in front of a beach. That is probably private property.
That beach is private property. Did you give written permission to the private property owner to put the houseboat?
I was told by the state it did not need it.
Yeah, it is. So can I ask you a question? How many boats were wrapped up on that particular houseboat?
We put three or four max. Any more than that, the anchor's not going to hold.
I've seen six out there, so.
Do you have pictures?
Yep.
All right. We're done. You're done with your comments?
Yep, all done.
All right, thank you. Yeah, oh, we're going to need the battering back and forth. Thank you, Andy. Thank you, Mr. Spiny.
Is there a reason why we don't want to see everything?
Pardon me?
Is there a reason why we don't want to see everything so that we can make a judgment on this?
We can see everything. You are seeing everything, but there's no need for those two to be arguing. It's not going to gain on either side.
I just wanted to see if you said there were six boats. I mean, was this six boats?
Well, we don't have any pictures, and we're here, and he said, she said. So if you'd state your name.
Yes, Allison Cowan. I live here in Ellsworth. I have land on Branch Lake, and my brother lives next door on Branch Lake. Many family members and friends live on Branch and on Green year-round, and I have a big float which I have a slide on. I have one of those bouncy things. Boats come from all over the place. They anchor up, and they all play on it, and we have always shared. Kids love it. They love going down the slide. They love all that stuff. Knowing so many family members and friends, sometimes there's three or four pontoon boats. We meet up, not on purpose, we're just like, "Oh, look, hi." And we'll get together in the middle, we'll talk a little bit, maybe have some lunch. And from what I heard, it's like you don't want us to put our boats together. I've lived here my whole life, and I've also been on that in Green Lake. We have a boat. My husband and my brother became inspectors so that they're very careful and cognizant of our surroundings and milfoil and all that stuff when we switch boats to different lakes. And I've been on that, and it's just as clean and pristine as it can be. I was quite impressed, actually. We're invited going by, and people are very friendly, very nice. I met new people. I had no issues with it whatsoever. I just thought everything was very pleasant and very enjoyable. And that's all.
Thank you for your comments. Any questions? Yes, ma'am.
So when you folks all tie up together like a flotilla, it's no different than a flotilla party on the ocean?
Exactly.
Where several sailboats will tie up together?
Oh, yeah, a lot less.
But you all put a separate anchor?
Just like that. Yeah, sometimes you have a boat and a boat.
But do you all put a separate anchor?
I don't know what they do. I just get in and out of a boat.
I think they tie off to that, which if they're all present and they're not leaving yet for three hours, it's probably fine.
Yeah, so it's been very fun. You know, the kids enjoy it. They jump off on Branch and in Green Lake. They just seem to have a lot of fun. It's just for July and August, pretty much, is all our summers go in Maine. And it's just nice to have that camaraderie and enjoy, enjoy the lakes. And I can say, as an ER nurse for 30 years, that I'm very cognizant of safety and cleanliness of the lake, and I didn't see any of that. Everyone was very careful to clean up and make sure cans, bottles, trash went in their own trash containers, and that's what I saw myself.
Are there other instances that we're talking about, or is it just this one that everybody's here about?
I have a question on your situation.
The problem lies is that with you there, you're not on the record and I can't see you, so if you want to make a comment, ma'am, first of all, are you done with your comments?
I am done.
Thank you very much for that.
You're welcome.
Jean, I don't mind the question, but we need him up front so he can be recorded and seen, that's all.
The question was for Ms. Cowan. Are you mooring this structure in front of your own property?
This one? Or the other?
No, no. The one you're referring to on Branch Lake.
It is kind of in the middle of the cove.
But it's, if you extended your property lines out into the lake, you're within generally that area?
Well, it could be, depends on which house you're in. It could be, if you go, it's a cove, so if you're over here, it's in front of their house. If you're here, it's in front of my house. If you're here, it's in front of my brother's house.
Do you ever ask permission from the adjacent property owners to moor that structure?
No.
So I have a question.
You have another question, Barbara G?
So, yeah, I guess I got a general real question. I thought that the water belonged to anybody, and like last year I was fishing Sabados Lake, I had people come out screaming at me because I'm fishing by, well, 25 feet off their dock in my boat, they're all screaming. So I actually take offense to that because I believe that the water is for everybody to use.
Yes, sir.
Just because a person owns the property that's 150, 200 feet away from that, I don't see. So you get to keep the lake all to yourself.
No, no, sir, that's not the issue.
Well, if you draw straight lines out from everybody's property, there's no room for nobody to go.
If they want to get my permission to moor within 200 feet of the front of my property where I'm paying $5,000, $6,000 a year property taxes, and they're up until midnight, 2:00 in the morning, partying and fireworks and whatever they want to do directly within 200 feet of the front of my property, that's the issue. And so the state is proposing to address a specific issue at Moosehead Lake?
Well, we're at Ellsworth.
But it goes farther than that in, that legislation will affect the entire state, however that's developed. But Ransley has asked and has passed an ordinance, as I understand it, that requires the mooring be licensed, and number two, that you can't get that mooring licensed without specific written approval from the adjacent property owner. That puts the respect back into the public use of the water.
So how far out from that, from that beach, if it's yours, how far out do you own?
I don't own anything beyond the high-water mark, sir.
Okay.
The 200-foot is the, is the headway area. Beyond that is the navigational area, and IF and W is, and D A C F is addressing those issues in their testimony to the state.
Thank you. Michelle, do you have a question or a comment?
A question for you.
Question, sir? Michelle Kaplan has a question for you.
So first off, you don't own that structure, right?
I don't own that structure.
Secondly, this structure is not on a mooring.
A mooring by definition will.
The gentleman said that they're on two anchors.
It's on an anchor, which is treated as a mooring in every community that state treats an anchor.
As a mooring.
If you have a cable or chain down at the mooring.
Then we admit that we don't own the water. That's settled, huh?
All right.
Patty Hamilton, live at Scotts Neck Way. I think what, so we did enjoy the company of the guests, and they did a nice job actually fixing up. There were times when things got out of hand. There is a mooring. They connect it to the bottom. To my knowledge, they only moved it one time and they stayed in one location all summer long in that place without the homeowner, the beach owner's permission. I think what the conversation today brings us to is that there is still a lot to be decided in terms of conversation and deciding on some strategies between people as you share the common, as you said, the common water and the common use of the lake. So, what does that mean? Is a compost toilet enough? Is that good enough for the lake quality or should it be something else? Should someone be able to park for a week, two weeks, the whole summer or should they be encouraged to move it so it's not the burden of only one place? So, I think what the conversation tonight brings about is that we need more conversation as a group, with staff, with the people in the hallway so we can talk it over and come up with a fair agreement that works for everybody. I think that's what's happened in other towns and that's really what we're asking for tonight.
Thank you for your comments. Sir?
Sure. James Cowan, I live out on Branch. And I've been over by this beach here and I just wanted to say what I experienced last summer. My grandson, who is five years old, had a water bottle that blew off of the boat, that my boat that was on an anchor next door there. And I went over and picked it up off the shore where it blew onto. I have no idea who he was, but basically he came out cussing, swearing, just raising the devil because I set foot up there to get that piece of trash. And somebody in here probably is that person and knows that they did it. And they were the ones cussing and swearing. When I was there, I didn't hear anything from the fellows in the boats. And this is on an anchor. It's my anchor because I gave it to him. He didn't have one big enough. My structure that I have is twenty-three feet, which is three feet shy of that. It's got a toilet in it. I got a bed in mine and it's got a little stove and some other stuff. So, is that now considered a houseboat? Because it's got all that stuff? It's got a little cabin on it? But the difference is mine has a motor and it's registered. And I can anchor it right next door to that thing and I got more stuff in my boat than he's got in that. So, is mine a houseboat? We're gonna have to figure all this out, aren't we?
Yeah, it's gonna take a conversation.
Well, it's gonna take more than a conversation.
So...
It's gonna take a bunch of lawyers, a bunch of money, a bunch of judges.
Is your houseboat...
All right, and no back and forth. This testimony. If you agree with him or not.
So, there's a lot of folks in here saying all kinds of stuff, making no sense. They haven't got a clue what they're saying, talking about a houseboat. It's not a houseboat. It doesn't have kitchen, doesn't have beds. It's barely got lawn chairs. They need to figure it out.
Any questions for this gentleman from council? Thank you for your testimony.
You're welcome.
We've had forty, forty-five minutes of both sides of the story and plenty to listen to. Gene, Michelle, who would you like to go first? You got a comment?
Well, I'd be willing to sit down with the people. It seems like this is the one boat that's in question on six lakes in Maine, in Ellsworth. So, this one boat, which at first I pictured it as being just a pile of trash in the middle of the lake, which when I saw the picture, I was quite surprised that it's actually, you know, probably as nice as my house, so.
Michelle?
As a shorefront owner on tidal waters, I can tell you that whenever you buy shorefront property, you learn to deal with certain things that you cannot control, like the multitude of albernets in front of my house right now, which I'm all for, working man, making, you know, making his living. And I understand that and I respect that. And some of them, we even let them onto our land to go and do their work. But my property line stops at the low watermark. That's it. That's the restrictions that I live in. And I knew that when I bought the place. And anything that happens on that water, whether it's a loud boat or anything, is nothing I can do. It's not my property. So...
I would be well willing to go check this spot out, sit down with the owner of this boat and everybody here that wants to sit down. I can moderate rather well. And if you guys wanna talk about it and see if we can't come up with a discussion, but my bottom thought on the whole thing is, is that the water belongs to everybody. So, hopefully I could maybe talk people into, I don't, I mean, I don't know.
Okay, Jane. Any other comments, Mr. Brilla?
Yes, I had several, but they were withdrawn. I have one left, though. I would like, I would think that any sleeping structure, floating or not, must pass code ordinances for occupancy. This would mean that any structure that stays permanently upright, not a tent, and has lived in overnight most days of the week must have proper disposal, wastewater, and not pollute the environment. This would exclude things such as floating docks, slides, and other items on the lake that are recreational. But the city could ban structures that should not be inhabited for safety reasons and keep the lake clean from sewage as well. If the city needs stronger wording to enforce this, we should research and adopt the language for health and safety of people using the lakes as well as any potential occupants. That was from Abigail Miller.
As soon as you start telling people they can't have that, Terry Pinkham is right when he said there's a hundred and fifty ice shacks out there and you go tell a hundred and fifty fishermen to take their ice shack off the lake, you are gonna have problems.
I do think that maybe we should just develop a committee to research it and to kind of address your issues as well as the right to enjoy waterway issues. And as you said, there's a balance. And we need to find that balance so that we don't deprive people who live and also pay taxes in Maine and wanna enjoy those waters, but also not deprive the private property right owners of their private property rights of enjoyment.
Of enjoyment. Mr. Blanchard, any comments?
Yes. Just want to make it clear, when someone mentioned the property lines, probably thirty minutes ago, in that half an hour, it's been construed that they are saying that they own out into the water between their property lines. They don't. The way it's worded in here, it's been a gentleman's agreement that the mooring is placed in front of your property between an extension of your property lines or an imaginary extension of your property lines out into the water. No one here is claiming ownership. Some people have taken umbrage that they claim those people have. And the other comment I have, Mr. Hamilton seems to have something else to say on this and I would like to hear it.
Yeah.
Mr. Hamilton, your last and brief summation.
Yeah, I'll keep it really brief. I think the counselor at the far end of the table here said it quite well, Counselor Kaplan. All we needed was the opportunity to have a committee, have a discussion. And I wanna say three things. I grew up in Arista County. I grew up on lakes. I know the tradition of ice shacks. We're out almost every weekend this winter looking at ice shacks. Doesn't bother us. It's the conflict you get on the water sometimes. And I believe Council of Lyons when he says, "I don't like it when people tell me I can't drive my boat by fishing." I would object to that, too.
Oh, I mean, they swore at me.
But if you're an oceanfront owner or you're a freshwater owner and you see a houseboat with as many as six boats rafted up on it and it's there for the entire summer, then it starts to shake a little bit. So, if there can be some reasonable use concepts in that committee discussion, I think we'll be just fine. And again, I think my wife said it a lot better than I did. There's a balance to be struck here and I think we can find that balance. And I agree with Counselor Blanchechad who said, "We're not claiming ownership beyond the shore." But if we could have some reasonable use, it used to be that people could talk about these and come to agreement. Now, people are a little bit more assertive. And so, that assertiveness needs to be balanced a little bit. And if we can find that balance, that would be great. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess we're at that point in this discussion, whether we just need to decide if we want to perhaps ask staff to look into this and come back with some suggestions or we set up a committee? What is the flavor? What would we like to do? Michelle?
I think there's a lot of unanswered questions and details to be worked out, so I would be in favor of forming the committee.
Committee or perhaps for us, maybe ask staff to look into some of that and then come back with some suggestions and have a meeting after that with a little more information put together. Is that possible, Mr. Mosher?
Certainly, yeah. And the staff has been, we've had multiple conversations with Andy and others and this was an issue that we addressed to some degree last summer. So, it's not new to the staff. I know Mr. Tilton has been involved and others, so we can certainly bring some more information to the council.
Might be the best route, let the, let staff put it together and put some history together with what we know. Also, put some, maybe some ideas of what laws or rights we do have or do not have and action we might take if we so desire. Does that sound good?
Sounds fair.
And then bring it back at another session and either by either workshop or perhaps another meeting and discuss it. So, we do see, at this point, both sides have presented. We're not a hundred percent sure what we have for ability to create laws or whatever we can do. So, I think we need to know more about that before we did know we could make, could make an informed and accurate decision. That sounds an agreement? Yes, 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 yes?
That works.
That works.
That'll make it happen.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for all three comments. We'll have some further discussion at this point. Item seventeen. Counselor zero four two one zero four, discussion in action on whether to continue holding the property located at thirteen ninety-nine Bangor Road for potential fire substation. In the future, we'll release the property to be sold in accordance to the city of Ellsworth ordinance as chapter ten, maintenance, administration, and disposition of tax-acquired property. Mr. Blanchechad, you placed it on the agenda. Do you wanna give us a synopsis of what you're thinking?
We have been approached by more than one person inquiring as to the city's ownership of the house at, I believe it's thirteen ninety Bangor Road that we have owned for seven, maybe eight years now. Originally, we had kept it off from the, being put out to bid, kept it off the bid list. The fire department several years ago had expressed an interest in that in case we ever decided to build a substation out in that direction. We have not done that. And so, this is to get the council sense on what to do with this building, with this property. Do we put it out to bid or do we hang on to it?
I wasn't sure how many, I can't remember how many acres are in that piece of property.
Two acres, according to the...
It's a couple acres?
Yes.
And at the time, I remember sitting in on that and the lady, due to health reasons, I think we got a re-pick with her, if I remember right, and she stayed there until she no longer stayed there and then the city ended up with it. So, virtually, we own a pile of marks, boards and bramble and two acres of land for no cost. And there were discussions in the past and I think Glenn's been in some of those public safety meetings where we talked about eventually expanding the fire department. I'm sure you might have been in one or two of those. And whether it's an ideal situation or an ideal spot or not, it's something we own at no cost that has been something for the future. So, I think as the city expands, there may be a need to do that. Obviously, it's not done now and they're back to the same, oh, how much money do you have to spend and where do you spend it? I'm not sure what we glean from the sale, whether it be forty or fifty thousand dollars and then we do turn it into taxable property. But if we do decide to expand and move out to a substation in the future, then that means that particular spot is lost and then we're out at the mercy of wherever we have to find one we like and we'll pay fair market value for that. So, whether we gain any amount of money in selling it and then taking money now and then turning around and spending money later at the point. Of course, the other issue is how long before we do a substation. See, now the money piece is getting pushed and that's why it isn't there. That's the discussion, our thoughts and processes in field.
So, I had heard maybe Mark talking about maybe having people bid on if they wanted the materials to tear it down or something?
The, I would, jumping ahead on that.
Oh.
If it comes to a motion, or whether or not it comes to a motion, I would proffer the idea of putting out the salvage rights to the barn that has collapsed. That is a major danger, probably, it may be one of the worst buildings in the city as far as safety for the salvage rights to the beams and timbers.
Is that something that we could do even if we decided to keep the property? Just have somebody...
We own it. We could, you know...
The property's not, I'm kind of, now that John mentioned, in the near future, ten years, five years, one year, forty years, they might wanna put a substation out there and if the land costs nothing, it's not gonna rot. The land won't.
And in that discussion of substations, there was one thought about there and if I remember right, the other one towards the Bucksport area, right, on the Bucksport Road? Yeah, that was after a three, three, this was the dream sheet. That would give better access and also would reduce, it reduces insurance for the people that live nearby.
In North Ellsworth is at a big disadvantage for a fire department because you're fifteen, twenty minutes, half an hour to half of it. So, if there is plans on ever putting a fire department out there, I think that you've got the land for nothing. Like you said, ten, twenty years from now, that's gonna cost maybe a hundred thousand, four hundred thousand. Who knows what property values it's gonna do? If you keep it now, you've got it. If you sell it for twenty thousand dollars, you've got nothing.
And I suppose there's another point, too. Mark, you're of a, you'd love to get rid of small buildings. There's probably no reason if we can't find in the next budget money, we can get that thing torn down and straightened out and we won't have to go to court or anything. We can just do it on our own. That would be an easy one.
I have, I have my doubts whether the city would ever put in a substation on that lot. It's in a technically fifty-five mile an hour zone. We all know in the summertime, that's an eighty mile an hour zone.
Like Lucerne's Fire Department.
And it's on top of the hill.
It's an eighty mile an hour zone and they come out there at times.
And you could control that with traffic signals or whatever, I would assume, or triggering lights announcing that they're leaving. So, there's ways to mitigate that. And it's a place, I mean, it's...
And the other, to me, the other way of looking at it, if the city sold it and it was purchased and another home was built on it, then we collect taxes, which takes the onus, a little bit of the onus off everybody else.
Forty years from now, you still haven't collected enough taxes from that house to pay for the fire department land that we buy.
Oh, I think we collect a little... Oh, I think we collect a little more than that.
Other councillor comments? Any thoughts from anyone else on that?
I just think it's a lot cheaper to hold on to what you have rather than to try to regain what you have later. But at the same time, does this building constitute an attractive nuisance?
It's in pretty good shape, has been. Do you know which building he's talking about?
I know there's several falling barns.
At McAllen's Hill on the right, it's right at the very crest. There's an old post and bean barn that's fallen right into the ground. And the house is stable, but it's in poor shape. The barn is much worse than the house.
Can we try to find out how much it would cost to tear it down and fill it in?
And we can't burn houses anymore, correct?
Why?
Yes, please. Yeah. It's just out of curiosity, while you're here.
Gary Saunders, Fire Chief. The fire department has taken the stance that we will no longer be burning down nuisance homes for the simple fact, not that it's not good training, probably the best training out there, but the regulatory principles and rules and regulations and things like that have just gotten so strict. I'll use an example, the last one that we were going to burn. We had our ducks in a row as best as we thought we needed to, and we got a call the day before we were going to burn that building from the DEP stating that if we burned that building, we were going to get fined. So, the regulations have just gotten so strict. With the mitigation, even after the building's burned down, they want to test the ashes to make sure there's nothing hazardous in that. So, the regulations have just gotten so strict that it's not worth it to burn houses anymore.
But what if they accidentally burn?
Well, then we get the Fire Marshal's Law Office involved.
It's funny how burns don't accidentally, is the environment.
All right. I would agree, though, that this particular property, the barn has fallen in, and it constitutes a nuisance. It's a danger. If the city decides to hold on to it, it would be my hope that that would get cleaned up, at least the barn portion. I've been in the house eight years ago, and made the mistake of opening the refrigerator door. I won't do that again. I can imagine what it's like now. But the house itself has some good bones to it. I mean, if someone wanted to buy that and fix it up, I mean, the house is savable, as far as I could see.
Still, at this point, you think?
Still, at this point, it has had some real good bones to it. If someone was a carpenter, fixer-upper guy, the house could be saved. I mean, it's not that far gone.
When's the last time somebody was in there?
Probably eight years ago.
I was in there last year.
You were? Okay, good.
Last year. It still looked like it had good, solid structure, and...
How do you feel about the location to the substation?
Personally, I don't think it's an ideal location for a couple of reasons, for a fire station in that, the top of that hill in the wintertime, I have a pretty good idea that the wind blisters up through there pretty good. You're going out into a three-lane road that's technically fifty-five, but we all know different. But anywhere, I mean, if we were to put a station on Branch Pond Road, oops, sorry, on Branch Pond Road, we'd still be pulling out on the Bangor Road. So, wherever we are on that corridor, we would still be pulling out on a major highway.
Yeah.
I guess we got the head of the town garage, he would know how bad it is in the wintertime there. Like, does it drift in like nine feet deep of snow across there?
We don't allow that, STO teams.
Well, that is a state, yeah. Well, you're out there in a little storm.
Now, that being said, you know, there's probably no better time in recent history to sell a piece of property to get your money, and put it back on the tax rolls, and someone could put a house in there. Originally, I was against the idea of selling it because I think it would be, somewhere in that area would be a good place for a substation at one point. Because I've done the measurements, the mileage measurements, and if you're within five-mile radius of a fire station, your insurances are reduced, and that would help us out. Winkapar out to Four Corners, it would help us in the Branch Pond Road, Nicolean Road area. Because where we are right now, the five-mile radius is about, on the Bangor Road, it's about Tracy's apartment, Tracy's Karate. That's about the five-mile radius point. So, anything beyond that has increased insurance premiums.
So, at the five-mile radius, at that point, that includes a substantial amount of homes, then, in coverage for the second of this location?
It would if we had a substation on the Bangor Road, yeah. Yeah, it would cover everything back to Tracy's Karate, and then north to...
The town line?
Past the town line, actually. It would help us out in, I guess it wouldn't get us into Scott's Neck back coming that way, but it would certainly get us to the town line. It would get us out to Four Corners.
Would get yours, so it's cheaper.
Now, putting a substation in there is useless if it's not manned. So, you know, you're going to be talking about manpower and things like that, which is a conversation for another day. But the question tonight is whether or not the council wants to sell off this piece of property.
Well, we've heard testimony both ways. Any further questions? Some type of motion to either start the process to sell, or go the other way?
I personally would rather keep it.
Are you making the motion?
Well, I wouldn't know how to work that. Let's see.
Just retain the property and not put it out for disposition? It's up to you. I mean, I'm not telling you to do it. It's up to somebody to make a decision.
I would do a motion to keep the property, possibly clean up the structures, and keep it for future reference if we did want to do a substation.
Second.
Moving second. You understand the motion is written?
Yes, but no matter which way it goes, I want to come back with motion B.
To what?
I want to come back with motion B. No matter which way this vote goes.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, and a second. All those in favor of this motion? Opposed?
I would like to make the motion that the city go ahead and put out the salvage rights to the collapsed barn, the infrastructural salvage. There are a lot of valuable timbers in there that, with the recent rise in the price of lumber, are even more valuable now. And they're very popular with restorers and architects, so on and so forth. I'd rather see somebody use them than have them just stay exposed to the weather, rotting, and doing nobody any good. In conjunction with that, I would also like to put out salvage rights to the contents of the, I'll call it the workshop.
And I appreciate you doing that motion, but as far as in the agenda item, I don't see the wording and the ability to do that. This is a separate item tonight on to whether to continue to hold the building. No, I'm not arguing. I think it's a good idea, but I don't know if we're doing our right to do that tonight without having another public as part of the general.
It's our building.
So, then we don't need to do a motion? If we have an agreement, we can send it out? I think we are in agreement. For to do what you're saying.
That's kind of what I would like to see here tonight. Everything right there now, it's city assets, and they're just going to waste.
Yep. And I agree with you on this one, that that barn is a pretty nasty-looking place. It needs to come down.
I would second your motion if...
So, we're in agreement with that?
Yeah, I mean, should we...
This is more a show of hands to say that we agree with it, and then the kind that staff can go along. Is anyone, everyone in agreement with that?
Point of clarity is that you're looking to salvage, have somebody salvage the barn and the building for their personal use, but keep the property?
Yes. Yeah, we're going to keep the property.
Yeah, this is just salvage rights. Has nothing to do with ownership of the property.
I mean, the people who bid on it or whatever would have to be insured.
They'll come back, yeah. We'll come back. They're going to go over an RFP or something, perhaps. We'll set it up as an RFP and put some guidelines in it. But, and it's right, there's a possible some revenue out of that, and also get rid of the building, and maybe get some stuff out of that.
And any, any money that we get out of that, I'd give to Dwight as seed money for his new program.
What, Gem Oliver?
I agree.
All right. So, with that, are we all in agreement?
Yes.
Michelle, Heather, Law, you? All right. So, that's the list of things to do.
I did.
Thank you. Now that we've dealt with that, now, maybe a couple members of our Highway Department and the city staff can go home after this. Item eighteen, Counselor 042105, request of the Public Works Director to award a contract for marking words, symbols, stop bars, parking lines, crosswalks, and authorize the city manager to sign the contract.
Good evening. Lisa Seckledge, Public Works Director. Sorry, my throat, all of a sudden get really dry, and I start coughing. Okay, so, this is a pretty standard yearly thing. The city, as we kind of discussed last month, is an urban compact, so as such, we have to do pavement markings. Last month, we approved the long lines, which is what they're called. And this month, we're back to discuss the symbols, words, parking lines, and crosswalks, et cetera. On April eighth, there is a bid opening, and there were seven bids that were requested, but we only received three. Newman's Ground Effects is a low bidder for this work. They have done this type of work for businesses in the community, and thus, I am requesting to award the bid to them. The contractor, Jordan Striping, who's done our symbols and markings for a number of years, has retired, and such is not available anymore. So, that's my request tonight. Any questions?
Do you have any idea what we're spending for Jordan's last year?
Um...
Ballpark?
Newman's Ground Effect is in the same range as what we were paying Jordan's last year. The other bidders are significantly more expensive.
Yeah, and for the public record, there were the three bids received, Laser Lines at forty-nine thousand nine thirty-five, Wilson's Ground Maintenance, forty-five, three ninety-five sixty, and the Newman Ground Effects for twenty-five thousand five twenty-one. So, this is a substantial difference.
Correct.
Any questions for the...
Same materials, quality.
I can't speak to the quality because I've never actually worked with any of those three vendors myself. I believe so. Mr. Newman, as far as I know, purchased a lot of Mr. Jordan's equipment when he retired last year. And so, a lot of the same equipment and stencils and such will be used that we've always used.
Quality of the paint, or whatever?
The paint is the same.
The same, okay.
It's waterborne paint. It has glass beads, as we require. Essentially, it should all be the same.
Thank you. Any other questions for the Public Works Director?
I have one. Lisa, have we looked yet into the new type of markings that apparently last for months and months and months longer?
So, I'll give you a quick rundown.
If you would.
I got in touch with one of the two major vendors in the state. The other one, her and I keep playing tag. I call, then she calls, and then I call, and then she calls. So, I haven't talked to her yet. But I just, I did talk to one of the other major vendors in the state, which they actually did not bid on our work, but they were nice enough to talk to me about pricing and such. So, he said for town work, the biggest concern is the condition of the road because a lot of town roads are not in the best condition compared to state roads, right? So, for thermoplastic, which is not the MMR we are looking at, but thermoplastic is like what we have on State Street when they redid State Street, it's kind of inlaid a little bit. The cost of waterborne is about ten cents a foot, basically, is what he's saying. So, the next level up would be like epoxy. That's about thirty cents a foot. Then you go up to thermoplastic, which is the stuff out there, that it goes up, keeps going up higher with that. And then with epoxy, and a lot of thermoplastic, there's also surface prep that needs to be done, and that ends up being about an additional fifteen cents a foot. He said in the long run, the thermoplastic ends up being five to eight times the cost of your waterborne paint, and you're not going to get five to eight years out of one of those things. So...
We aren't getting a year out of them.
Thermoplastic, so State Street was done, what, four or five years ago? Some of them are still in great condition. Some of them, the plows have peeled up, and we're just filling in chunks of it with paint when we do paint every year. So, you know, it does last a little bit longer, but it's, anything in the state of Maine with plows is not going to last forever. And nobody around here does spray thermoplastic, which is another option, but nobody around here does that.
All right, thank you.
Well, you got an answer whether you like it or not, I don't know. You have an answer. All right, no other questions. I have another ten motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve as presented.
A second? Moving second, and all those in favor? In unanimous.
Thank you.
Oh...
Don't go anywhere, all right?
I'm shooting for nine, got to get out of here by nine thirty. Counselor, number nineteen, Counselor 042106, request of the Public Works Director to approve an excavator lease agreement for a term of up to six months. Welcome, Lisa.
Hi. So, again, this is our yearly request to rent an excavator for a duration of approximately six months. Thanks to the beautiful weather we've been having, we're hoping to get these rental actually May first. So, if we get approval tonight, we would get it May first and have it through May thirty-first, I mean, October thirty-first. It's up to six months, so if we, I mean, we're never going to run out of things to do, but if we run out of things to do with a big excavator, it would go back early. We've got two bids for the size excavator that we need. These are the only two, basically, in the state that have the size that we need. Eagle Rental is who we've used the last three years, and we're requesting they are the cheapest, and we're requesting to use them again this year.
So, they were good at servicing, no issues with the machine?
No issues.
And the price this year is?
Forty-two hundred bucks.
Yeah, but is it compared to last year the same, or...
It's up from last year, but it's lower than the year before.
Than two years. Last year was an unusual year.
Yeah, last year, they gave it to us wicked cheap because nobody was renting them, so...
And I thought it was. It is, we do seem to be in an early spring, and I've been on certain properties of mine that are actually drier than I remember them in several years. So, it's a great time. If we can get an extra month of work done, I'm sure you and Mr. Wilson can put it to good use.
Oh, yeah.
Any other questions for the Public Works Director on this? Motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the request to go into a rental agreement with Eagle Rental for a one thirty-five class excavator and attachments at a cost of forty-five hundred a month for a duration of approximately six months to be paid for through the Highway General Fund account.
Isn't it forty-two hundred dollars a month?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, it should be forty-two. I wrote that wrong. That's my fault.
Mr. Chairman.
You meant to say forty-two hundred, right?
Let's make that forty-two hundred a month.
Second.
All right, moving to second. Any questions?
I like the other amount better.
No further questions? All those in favor? In unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item twenty, Counselor 042107, discussion on in action to hold a workshop to learn about the state's adult use marijuana law, a workshop to learn about the state's adult use marijuana law, and in particular, component of the law that addresses local regulation of marijuana establishments. The reason I ask this to be on there is a gentleman that I know has a business, and he's been approached, and I know that there were some discussions in the past of what we were gonna do, and the laws changed, and it's finally out there, and it just doesn't seem to be going anywhere. So, my thought process was, if we agree to at least look at it, then we should get staff working on some rules and regulations on both, I guess, the ability to sell and the ability to grow, and the other things that we have some control over, that the state allows us. That's it. That's what I had in my mind, so it's everyone's personal idea. I was looking this morning, and I see, I think it's sixteen states have legalized recreational, along with DC, and two more coming, and there's about forty now that do it medically, so the face of it's changing. And it's now the state's turn, and do we want something like this, or can we allow it, and how would we work it into our town?
What are we trying to figure out?
Michelle?
Um, thank you.
Yeah, I get that, you know, the feathers are out of the pillow, and you can't put the feathers back in, but what we can do is create local regulations that can protect the people from adverse reactions that are unanticipated. Uh, you know, I've studied this for a number of years, and I know for a fact, having taken care of patients with marijuana-induced psychosis, that it is not a benign drug. If somebody wants to use it, that's fine, but I think that as a city, we should require, if they wanna sell it in the city, that they should have a warning label on it listing the potential side effects.
That's all, that's all will be worked out as, as time goes. Mr. Miller?
Yes, I, I agree with you, though. We have to know what we're dealing with, so having a, a talk that would help to explain the laws would be very beneficial, because they are very confusing.
So, I guess, are we...
I'm against marijuana, but I'm all pro-business, so if it's legal, if it's a legal business, I've had it, so...
Maybe by the time this is done, you'll be pro-marijuana?
I doubt that. That'll never happen. I almost got high coming off the island the other day, when some van in front of me, they were puffing it, and I couldn't slow down back off.
And I did, I did see you on duty the other day, sitting in the van, in your truck with a cellphone, so you looked pretty comfortable.
Was I talking on it?
Nope. You were waiting for, you were waiting for a contractor to come, 'cause you couldn't...
Oh, oh, yeah, when I was packing the fire hose.
Yeah, but you were awake, I will give you that, but you were sitting still, that was...
I was gonna say, I don't talk on it in the truck.
So, yes, move ahead and hold a workshop, and at least see, so if you go ahead and add that to your list.
It's growing.
Hey, that's good.
Yeah, I would like to have more discussion.
It's good, this time of night, let's keep rolling.
There definitely needs to be more discussion on this.
All right, we'll set up a workshop in time and something, and, and should learn a little bit more and make a decision what we can or cannot do.
One, one quick question, real quick, before we move on.
Yes, sir.
So, workshop, regarding a workshop for the council?
Yeah, with the council, at first, I think, with staff and, and some guidelines and some idea what we can do or can't do.
Okay, so, what I'll plan to do is I'll plan to get a committee together with staff...
Yes.
To bring forward to the workshop, to present options to the council...
Yes.
And educate the council on the current status of the laws.
Yeah, but allow what we're allowed to control, what the state says, and, and anything that's pertinent to that, for us to make an educated, informed decision, and perhaps, if at the end, move staff along to creating some laws, rules, federal regulations.
Is the whole thing against, like, federal law, somebody told me, it's...
Yeah, the other question is...
How does that work?
If, like, with the Second Amendment, we can't pick and choose which federal laws we're gonna follow, as you said, why is it that we can pick and choose which federal laws we follow for marijuana?
Because the state legalized it. It doesn't have anything to do with the municipality. We, we're not legalizing it, the state did. We're opting whether we wanna allow people to retail sell it in the city of Ellsworth. It's already legalized in the eyes of the state.
Even, even if we have them, if we have, have a shop open here, a DEA agent from the federal government can still come in, arrest them, and take them away to federal prison, and that's the way it is.
So, by the state adopting that law, that overrules the federal law?
No, it doesn't.
It's now, so, and that's, so Gene, if you...
That gets confusing.
If you do decide to embrace it, start growing and selling it, be careful, the feds may come for you.
I ain't never gonna grow it and sell it, you ain't gotta worry about that. I don't worry around me.
All right, let's move on to the next one, so we might go home tonight.
This is not a free samples workshop, yeah?
It can be, if you're buying. Oh, okay.
No, no, no.
Number twenty-one, council order zero four two one oh eight, discussion in action on supporting the bike pedestrian path extension project, with local support through a future funding source. Sounds pretty vague. You've got a bucket full of money, Mr. Blanche, or what are we doing?
And on that note, I ask this to be put on, um, to bring the council up to speed on this. Um, we, in meetings we've had with the state, they have given us figures of five hundred thousand dollars to build the first half, and engineer and design all of it, um, with construction just on the first half. The city share would be twenty percent, a hundred thousand, and the state would pay the four hundred thousand. Being April, my, uh, my bent right now would be to hold off a month on this. Would, I, the budget hearings have started, I wanna see we're relying, um, in that, uh, in that arena, uh, before we go ahead and commit us, uh, to anything, you know, to, to hold off a month. Um, I, I think the next four, four budget meetings, we'll, we'll have a lot more information next month.
All right.
But I, I, I just wanted people to know, I'd, I'd like to get people's opinion on this, uh, you know, the, the residents of Ellsworth, yea, nay, um, how they feel, and also, you know, any, how the, how the council feels on this.
All right.
To get their, to get their temperature.
Tonight, or at the future meeting you were supposed to looking at after budgeting?
Either one. I'm, I'm, I'm open to comment slash discussion.
Well, I, I just think that, you know, if you've driven up Water Street lately, it's, it's just one big pothole after the next, and Grant Street is practically impal, you can't drive it very well in the wintertime, and I just, until we have better roads for the people driving and make Ellsworth more drivable, why do we need to, maybe that's why we need to make it more walkable, because not drivable.
My, my feeling on that is, transportation takes many forms, whether you're driving, whether you're, you're biking, whether you're walking, and we have to, uh, pay attention to all of it. We, we, we can't just cater to, you know, to one certain segment. Certainly, the, the, the bulk of transportation funding in the state is for vehicles, but we also have to take care of the others.
But the bulk of people moving in Ellsworth are driving, and people are not walking through Ellsworth to get to Bar Harbor, they're driving through Ellsworth, and unfortunately, the roads are, are just atrocious right now.
But those people...
People have been begging to get the roads done for years, and we keep spending money on, on pet projects.
What are, what are finish mark?
If we keep spending money on pet projects, like walking paths and parks and green this and green that and solar farms, and we're not fixing the roads, we're doing disservice to the very people that elected us to be here in the first place. If you can't drive through Ellsworth without nearly taking out your undercarriage, what are we doing?
I don't think that putting up, uh, solar farms that saves the city two hundred thousand dollars a year in their electric fees is, uh, anything I'd call a pet project by any means. Um, and I don't think that anything that helps people maintain or regain their health and keep them out of hospitals, you of all people know what exercise can do for one's health, and to put this right through the middle of a, uh, the heart of the city, so that people in the neighborhoods, people on their lunch hour before or after their, their work can all use this. The path that we have now, the, the rail, the trail paved path, is used extensively. We now have, you know, there's, in the summertime, there are hundreds and hundreds of people that use that throughout the day. I know because I live on it, literally and figuratively, and to have an extension into it, uh, that would take people from the, um, intersection of LL Bean or, or the Shaw's intersection, and they'd be able to walk out to Ellsworth Falls, out to the Glass Shaw, safely, unimpeded, is, to me, a win-win for everybody, but that's...
It's also a safer way for kids to walk to school in the morning and walk home in the afternoon.
I'm, I'm...
It's also a safer way for kids to walk home and walk to school in the morning.
Oh, yeah, they...
Only if they live in that neighborhood.
Not just that neighborhood, no.
No, they, they come down from Maddox, you know, the Maddox Avenue.
Yeah, they do.
Um, it, it isn't just, you know, kids that live on, uh, on that path that use it.
That's the Lions.
So, I had a chance to walk that path, the whole way, from Sunrise Glass to LL Bean and back. I never met a car on the roads, I didn't trip, I didn't fall, I walked straight down. When I got to your house, I cut across MA Clark's, where it used to be MA Clark's. Never tripped, fall, had no problem, walked all the way across. When I got to the, the, uh, with the old Bangor Hydro building, I walked around to the left of the building, never ran into any issues there. When I came back, I walked to the, to the opposite side of the building, and I never ran into issues there, and I, I really deeply feel, the place where this city is lacking a place to walk, and I almost ran over somebody here, is on Oak Street, near Rosely Taylor's, from there down to Park Street. If it had not been for a person carrying a white bag, I would've ran over them...
Yep.
And not even seen them, and that would've been my fault, and probably I'd have been facing manslaughter now.
Yeah.
So, we need a sidewalk there before we go doing any other... Somehow, I even look at it, I don't know how it's gonna work, but it needs to be put there.
I agree that you're on Oak Street needing the sidewalks, and that's also tied in with the rebuild and everything else, and unfortunately, it just...
It has to be done. I mean, somebody's gonna get killed there.
And it's, the bike pad path, it's a quality of life issue, and people do use it dramatically. But it also is a funding issue, and when can we get it, and who's paying for it, so whether to put it or not. So, Heather, do you think it's a good idea to keep going?
I do, I do. I think there are hundreds of people that use it. Um, you know, I went to the high school today and saw many people walking. Um, kids use it all the time, and it does complete the loop that Mr. Cole used to talk about. Um, you know, you can go all the way to LL Bean, there's talk of the, the crosswalk there by Shaw's, gets you to the housing down there, and then you can get down to the waterfront. So, it, that's the loop. Um, that part of that, that road is unpassable, you can't get through there with a car. I mean, that has to be fixed at some point regardless, and that would take, take care of that. And anytime the state's gonna put up four hundred thousand, and we can spend a hundred thousand...
We're still spending the five hundred thousand.
Yep. That's good.
I, I agree.
All right.
I agree, but I, it is part of the whole picture, Mark, and I, I agree with Mark that it's...
All right. Bob, your report?
If I may, I just, I would add that, um, you know, this, this is a, a, a fine conversation, but it's, it's a little bit premature. We really should have staff here who have been involved in the process, who have the knowledge about the future funds, uh, that are needed, potent, potential sources for those funds, uh, to be able to have a more educated conversation about what this, what this looks like. Questions could be raised, certainly to our highway director, with the correct information as to how this, this money may or may not impact our ability to do local roads. As Mr., uh, as the chairman said, you know, building a sidewalk on Oak Street, although much needed, is part of a much bigger project and need that has to take place, you can't just roll out a sidewalk. So, I mean, I, I think those are valid points and valid questions, but not necessarily to be had wrapped up into this, this project, because this project, again, with the right people, staff people here to answer the questions, may be able to direct you away from thinking that one has to negatively impact the other. So, I would encourage, uh, additional conversation, uh, perhaps at the May meeting with the proper, appropriate staff people to be able to answer the questions and, and provide more detail.
So, discussion in action. Table it to a future date, or do you want to...
No, no, I, I wouldn't move the table up.
That's fine, we can talk about it later. Have a motion to table, do I have a second?
Second.
Yes. All those in favor? Item twenty-two adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? In unanimous. So, with...